This is Tuesday, May the 18th, 2021. It's a regular county commission meeting. Is Pastor Keith Fargus-Harson?
Thank you for being here.
Thank you, sir.
Let us pray. Almighty God and everlasting Father, we thank you for this day. It is a time when you have called your servants together. The issues of our lives sometimes plague the human spirit. We're drawn sometimes to the crossroad, not knowing where to go. Today, we ask that your presence be with us, that you will protect the servants with whom you have called. Give them clarity of mind and speech. Allow them to come to a conclusion that will serve humanity best. Lord, we're frail human beings and sometimes with broken spirits. You can calm our hearts. You can clear our minds of any such thing that would entangle the responses of these commissions. Today, we ask that you will protect them. Allow them to have the confidence in decisions they have made, that when they have concluded, they can say, "I have done my best." Father, be with this council today and guide them through the thicket or the thicket of things that seems difficult. Help them to give a response that will not only glorify your name, but also will satisfy the desires of your people. We ask now that they remain under your care and that your name will be glorified. These things we ask in your precious name. Amen.
Amen. We have a quorum, so I'm going to call this meeting to order. Commissioner Loeb.
If you all would join me for the pledge, please.
We're going to move into resolutions, awards, and presentations. Commissioner Smith.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Who do we have here today representing the mental health? All of you? Cool. Three of us? Okay.
It's a full house.
Yeah. Come on up to the podium. You can join her if you'd like. Or not if you don't like. I'll read this and then I'll give you the floor. Thank you for being here. Whereas, mental health is part of overall health, and whereas, mental health helps sustain an individual's thought processes, relationships, productivity, and ability to adapt to change or face adversity; and whereas, mental health can adversely affect those abilities and can be life-threatening in nature; and whereas, one in four adults experience mental health problems in any given year, which can contribute to onset of mental illness; and whereas, one in 17 adults live with mental illness, such as major depression, bipolar disorder, and even schizophrenia; whereas, approximately one-half of chronic mental illness begins at the age of 14; and whereas, long delays often occur between the time symptoms first appear and when individuals get help; early identification and treatment can make a profound difference in successful management of mental illness and recover. Whereas, every citizen and community can make a difference in helping end the silence and stigma that has surrounded mental health illness and discouraged people from getting help. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Brevard County Board of County Commissioners do hereby proclaim the month of May, 2021, as Mental Health Awareness Month in order to increase the public understanding of the importance of mental health and to promote the identification and treatment of mental illness. Done, ordered, and adopted in regular session this 18th day of May, 2021. Madam Chair, I move to approve this resolution.
Motion by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Loeb. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes 5-0.
Do you have the floor?
Oh. I cannot do as well as what he did. I wanted to thank the county commissioners. It's quite an honor to be here representing the families in Brevard County who have loved ones who struggle with a mental illness. Sorry. I represent the National Alliance of Mental Illness in Brevard County. We provide education for people who have a mental illness and also their family members. We provide support and advocacy. And I know how important the county commissioners are to the zoning of housing in Brevard County. I just want you to be aware that we are here. I consider this a warm handshake to you, and I hope to be working with you in the future so that we can find some supportive housing for people who need it.
And thank you and all the people you work with for all you do.
Thank you.
It's very important to the community.
Commissioners, I have more resolutions, but I forgot to approve the minutes. I have a motion to approve the minutes for 126 and 24. I have a motion by Commissioner Loeb. Second by Commissioner Zonka. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes 5-0. Moving to the next resolution, Mr. Gary. If you have people with you, you may bring them. Good to see you, sir. I'm going to read this, and if you'd like to say a few words, we would be most honored to hear from you.
Well, I'd just like to thank, first of all, my wife, Ruthie, for supporting me in all these efforts there. And I have a few of our board members. Ms. Gloria Bartley here on the right, Mr. Delores Abraham, and Mr. Art Edwards here this morning. I want to thank them for getting up. They're all retired, but they're all busy. And I know it's an effort to get up and want to come down, but I appreciate it. And also, especially your office for assisting us with this resolution. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. It's an honor to do this. Whereas, on September 22, 1862, President Abraham Lincoln issued the Emancipation Proclamation stating in part, "On the first day of January in the year of our Lord, 1,863, all persons held as slaves within any state or designated part of the state, the people will therefore be in rebellion against the United States, shall then henceforth and forever be free." And whereas, news of the end of slavery did not travel to certain areas of the United States for more than two years after the effective date of the Emancipation Proclamation, on May 20, 1865, Union General McCook and federal forces arrived in Tallahassee, Florida, and on the steps of the Knox House announced that all enslaved people of Florida are now free. On June 19, 1865, Union General Gordon Granger and the federal forces arrived in Galveston, Texas to announce that enslaved people in Texas are now free. June 19, or Juneteenth, has been traditionally recognized and celebrated as the day slavery ended in the United States. The recognition of June 19 as the emancipation in the United States, while denoting a significant part of history, does not justly and accurately represent Florida's historic emancipation record. Whereas, Harry T. and Harriet V. Moore, cultural complex, Board of Directors' desires to make the public aware of the comprehensive and accurate history of Florida in all regards, and now calls upon Brevard County Commissioners to declare and recognize May 20 as Emancipation Day in Brevard County and all of Florida. Commissioners, I make a motion to approve this resolution. Second by Commissioner Loeb. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes 5-0.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Morning, how are you today?
Move into our next resolution. I think this is District 2. Commissioner Loeb.
I believe we have E.3 performing?
No, sir, that has been removed.
Okay, all right. We have got a resolution for EMS week. I'll go ahead and read it. So it reads, "Whereas, emergency medical professionals and volunteers provide medical care to victims of sudden, life-threatening injuries and illnesses, often under stressful conditions and in high-risk situations to save lives; and whereas, the 2021 National Emergency Medical Service Week theme is 'This is EMS: Caring for Our Communities' reminds us that Brevard County's residents and guests benefit daily from the knowledge, skill, and judgment of paramedics, emergency medical technicians, firefighters, dispatchers, educators, administrators," this is a long list, "emergency physicians, emergency nurses, and others who encompass the emergency medical services system; and whereas, emergency medical personnel must rapidly assess, manage, and effectively provide care in unpredictable situations requiring life and death judgments; and whereas, Brevard County's EMS teams unselfishly serve on the front line of health care when responding to man-made and natural disasters at the local, state, and national levels; and whereas, a recognition is due for the emergency medical services system for its accomplishments and contributions to improve public welfare through health care, medical transportation, injury prevention, education, disaster response, homeland security, and other initiatives that reduce health care costs and save lives. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, does hereby proclaim the week of May 16, 2021, through May 21, 2021, as Emergency Medical Services Week." I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve.
I have a motion. Second by Commissioner Smith. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes 5-0.
So I'm going to refer our EMS chief, Orlando Dominguez. He's going to say a few words.
Well, good morning, Madam Chair. Good morning, fellow commissioners. Thank you so much for the opportunity to allow me to share some good news with all of you. But before I do, I want to take this time to thank our county manager, Frank Abate, Kathy Wall, and our fire chief, Chief Scholmeyer, for their unwavering support for lean six sigma and continuous quality improvement. And the reason that I say that is because those are the same tools that we're using to improve our pre-hospital sudden cardiac arrest outcomes. Some of you may know that a cardiac arrest event is when somebody's heart unfortunately stops beating. We refer to those individuals at that state as being clinically dead. Unless something is done quickly, to be precise, within 600 seconds, 10 minutes, the prognosis is poor. I will share with you that before we embarked on this initiative, the cardiac arrest outcomes was about 16% of individuals that we were able to save during a cardiac arrest event. Now that we've embarked on this journey, I'm happy to report to all of you that we're at 31%. That means that we have doubled our cardiac arrest survival, you know, outcomes. That means that less people are dying, more people are surviving cardiac arrest. I will tell you that it does take a village. And with that said, we couldn't have done it without our community, our partnerships with law enforcement, our hospital personnel, our municipal partners that are right there with us on every call. But I must say that the backbone of this initiative has been our BCFR 911 dispatchers and our men and women, our EMTs and paramedics. So with that said, being that it's EMS week and we're talking about sudden cardiac arrest survivors, we have invited some of our pre-hospital cardiac arrest survivors to join us here this morning, if you can please stand.
Oh, nice.
These are all survivors. And there's no doubt, commissioners, with your continued support, we will continue to save more lives in Brevard County. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. What more can I say?
Thank you. What a great presentation.
I mean, if you all want, I'm thinking this is a county-wide thing rather than me getting down here.
John looks too nice to pass this.
All right. All eyes on me. Here we go. One, two, and three. One more. One, two, and three. We got a camera right over here. Got it? All right. Thank you all.
Commissioner Zonka. She's all yours.
There goes about half the room.
Can I have Bob Clark up here? Bob didn't know he was going to be recognized today, so the look of surprise on his face is expected. Thank you, Rosa, for bringing this to us. Appreciate it. Hi, Bob. I know this is a surprise, but it is my honor to recognize you today. Whereas, Robert "Bob" H. Clark was born on May 28, 1919, at Idlewild, a farm near Carthridge, Illinois. And whereas, Mr. Clark became interested in airplanes at an early age when a barnstormer landed in a pasture near his farm, and he paid $2 for his first plane ride high above his hometown. And whereas, Mr. Clark enlisted in the Army in 1939, initially assigned as an engineer before transferring to the Air Corps with the goal of becoming a military pilot, which he achieved in May 1942. And whereas, Mr. Clark had the privilege of flying numerous military aircraft throughout his career, including the Douglas B-26, the North American B-45, in non-combat overseas missions, and had amassed almost 5,000 pilot hours at the time of his retirement as a lieutenant colonel in September 1960. And whereas, after retiring from the military, Mr. Clark served the next 20 years at NASA, providing administrative support to the spacecraft operations division during the Mercury, Gemini, Apollo, and Shuttle programs. And whereas, Mr. Clark was married for 66 years to his beautiful wife Barbara and had two children. And whereas, Mr. Clark is a very well-known and respected person in the community, and a parade in his honor of his 102nd birthday, which is organized by his friends and neighbors, will be held on May 29 in Indian Atlantic. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, does hereby recognize and commend Robert "Bob" Clark for all that he has accomplished in his 102 years and wishes him a very happy birthday. Done, ordered, and adopted in regular session this 18th day of May, AD 2021. Chairwoman, I'd like to make a motion.
I have a motion by Commissioner Zonka. Second by Commissioner Smith. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes 5-0.
Happy birthday.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'd like to present my fellow CFX folks. Well, there you are, all the way in the back. I was looking for you. I didn't see you.
I need to take lessons from you on how to get here. You were always 15 minutes early for our board meetings. And I was not so lucky.
This is Laura Kelly, our director for CFX.
Good morning. I feel very honored to be before you today. This is our very first presentation to the Brevard County Commission since you became a part of our agency in 2017. And today, we're going to talk about our master plan process. Brevard County became a part of the CFX family in 2017. It was actually made a regional agency in 2014. And we are super excited to be here for the very first time talking about what your community would like from the CFX and how we can serve you better moving into the next 25 years. We are very fortunate to have your Commissioner Smith serve on our board today, and we thank you for that. Currently, CFX owns and operates 125 Centerline miles of expressway in central Florida. CFX really was created in the 1960s when Kennedy Space Center needed an express connection to its education center. It was the Florida Institute back then. It is now known as the University of Central Florida today. The Florida Legislature created CFX back then so that NASA could connect to its education center. And that is how the foundation of our expressway system was created. As you know, and because we all live here, how quickly central Florida is growing. Thousands of people move here each day. And I can tell you now, for the last two months, our traffic has eclipsed pre-COVID levels. So we are right back at fighting the congestion that we are trying to face every day and trying to mitigate. And you'll see in the work plan that we're working on today, we have many, many miles of widenings as well as extensions and new expressways in central Florida. Why is the master plan so important? It is the foundation by which we prioritize projects and we deliver transportation solutions to central Florida. So it's really important for you to weigh in. Tell us how we can serve you better. How would you like CFX to move forward in the future, serving Brevard County? We literally meet with hundreds of people during this process. And I think with your help, we can reach hundreds and hundreds of people in Brevard County to get their opinion on how we can better serve them. The last master plan was a master plan for four counties. Brevard yet hadn't joined our family. We identified $11 billion of potential expressways across four counties. We also could only identify $9 billion of funding for that $11 billion. That's why that prioritization process is so important. The master plan defines the prioritization process as well as the types of transportation that we invest in. Today, just as of last week, we are currently investing $3.2 billion over the next five years into transportation solutions. I'm going to talk a little bit about the projects that we delivered over the past five years, some of the major ones. One was a rebuild of the 408-417 interchange. The 417 actually doubled its traffic in just five years. So it was very important to reconfigure this interchange to greatly increase throughput. Today, this interchange is open to traffic, and it really provides an express route to downtown Orlando from the East Coast. We are also in the midst of completely rebuilding the gateway to the Orlando International Airport. As you probably know today, the round, the tight interchange that was there for over 40 years is now being reconfigured to greatly increase throughput and really create a beautiful gateway into the central Florida area. And that project will be done in about a year and a half. And of course, our partnership and our ability to work with intermodal partners has made it possible to grant Brightline anisement just south of the beach line to the Orlando International Airport. And if you travel the beach line today, you can see the tracks coming out of the ground. The Brightline train will be open to traffic in early 2023. And now, as I reiterated many times, this master plan process is important because for the very first time, we get to get Brevard County's input. So we're excited about that, and we look forward to hearing from you. So we're excited about that, and we look forward to hearing from you. We have two major projects that we've added to our system since 2015. One is the Wakava Parkway, which our portions of Wakava have been open to traffic since 2017. And then the Point Sienna Parkway was acquired by CFX a couple of years ago. Again, we are adding a lot of additional capacity. We are trying our best to keep up with the potential demand moving forward. The 417 and the 429 are two of the fastest-growing parts of our system. It's the Beltway around Orlando, as well as the beach line in and around the Orlando International Airport. There are many areas that we are developing concept feasibility and mobility studies. Now, a concept and feasibility study identifies potential alignments in a given corridor. It does not prioritize alignments. That's done in the next phase of development, the PDNE. And one area I want to point out is the massive area that connects Brevard County to Orange County and Osceola County. That big swath that you see there in blue is to identify potential alignments for evacuation routes, future evacuation routes, and additional connectivity as central Florida grows. It's a very important study. Once those alignments are identified, potential alignments, this will probably go back on the shelf for a few years because the demand hasn't really reached the point where an alignment needs to be prioritized. But when it does, it is done so it starts that process, and we're able to pick up for a PDNE study. And then, of course, there's a lot of PDNE studies going on. Some of these that have been identified on this map are also moving forward into design and construction. And those are the ones that have been identified for construction. One is Point Sienna Parkway's extension, which will eventually reach I-4 and the State Road 429. This is a very important connection for Osceola County, which really has no way out from a really growing residential area. And then there's one very important reliever that connects US-27 near Lake Luisa Park to State Road 429. So we have five major questions that we would love for Brevard County to weigh in on. So we actually can send you the survey electronically, and we hope to hear from many, many Brevard County residents to help us with these very important questions. I'll be glad to answer any questions you might have.
First, I just want to thank you for coming out. I can tell you, having lived in Seminole County for double-digit years myself, the roads have always been great that you all have managed. Now that said, 528 is one of those few roads that's of huge importance, not just to a small percentage of my constituents, but to a lot of them. It runs right through the dead center of my district. It's something I look out of my window at the office onto as it passes by where it connects to State Road 3. FDOT, and I don't know what specifically the plans are. There have been some things that have been talked about, both here and at our TPO. But FDOT has been working with other stakeholders over a long period of time on different possibilities with respect to the 528 causeways as they cross over the waterways. And I know that they fully understand that there are tens, if not hundreds, of millions of dollars that are needed in order to get that to where it needs to be, or at least closer to it. And again, this isn't an attempt to shoot down anything. I'm open to listening to any proposal that you have. But I would just put out there, just to keep all of us on the same page, at least from where I'm at, whatever it is that's proposed, if it would cause us to lose the funding that FDOT has already budgeted or is planning to budget in, knowing that that expense has been building for a period of decades, I would be very concerned with how that funding would be replaced, more specifically where the sources of funding to replace that or offset that would come from. But, you know, from my perspective, again, I think your history of managing roadways in a stellar fashion, it certainly has a value to me. But there are some concerns along with the good as well. So all I'll tell you again is, I'm very interested to see what you all have. I'm not opposed to anything categorically. But again, I just have to see the specifics of it.
Absolutely. What's important to understand is that we deliver toll expressways. And tolling is not the answer to every transportation problem. CFX has a history of working with Florida Department of Transportation to be partners to deliver transportation. And in some cases, the Florida Department of Transportation delivers transportation solutions that a toll road would not serve well. So that's why a concept and feasibility study is always done before we even embark on a solution. But what's important to understand is that Brevard County residents that travel on CFX roads, they get two very important benefits. Number one, the tolls that we collect in the central Florida area get reinvested back here in central Florida. That's extremely important to understand. And the Florida Department of Transportation is a state agency. The tolls they collect are invested throughout the state. So that's just a nuance that Brevard County residents need to understand and why that's important. Number two, the Central Florida Expressway offers volume discounts to every EPAS customer. And those EPAS discounts add up to a lot of money. I mean, we gave back millions and millions of dollars to our customers every year through volume discounts. That is something you only get with our agency. The Florida Department of Transportation and the term bank do not offer volume discounts. And so for those two reasons, your local agency provides that because I think we understand and we're closer. We have a local voice. We have Commissioner Smith on our agency board, who every month gets to listen to our residents and the needs of our residents. And we hope to deliver on those.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to point out, we had a discussion the other day about 417, and you had already alluded to the fact that we in central Florida have already exceeded pre-COVID numbers.
That's right.
And 417 has doubled in, what, the last five years, that one section? And we're already on it. We're ready to start expanding that one section already. So I think that's important for everyone to understand, too, is that being a local agency, you see the developments as they happen. And we're ready to do something about it. So I think that's important to know, too.
I agree. And the 417, almost in its entirety, is being widened right now. And it's also being equipped with hard-on-shoulder running means, it just means that when congestion occurs, there's an additional lane that opens up so that we are able to meet the peak hour demands of a roadway. And that's something we're introducing to central Florida now on every road that we widen.
Which is a huge, huge benefit. When traffic gets heavy, you have, we have, that extra lane on each direction that we can open up and relieve that pressure.
Exactly.
Thank you for being here.
Can we, Sheriff Lofer?
Just a couple of thoughts and maybe a question or two, if that's all right as well.
Sure.
You mentioned a few moments ago that the tolls that are collected in Brevard, and something that we can share with the residents, is that the tolls that are collected here are going to be reinvested in central Florida. Do you tend to, when you collect tolls, keep them in that area in which they're collected? Or do they get spread throughout the system? Because I guess a concern that I could see coming up from constituents would be if tolls are collected here and they're spent here, that might be far more palatable than tolls being collected here, but then being spent on, let's say, 417.
That is a really good point. Brevard County just became a part of our family in 2017. We are able to take the foundation of our system that truly is, the majority's in Orange and invested here in Brevard. That is the brilliance of a regional system. So as expressways are identified in Brevard County, it is likely the tolls that are collected in the other, like, Orange County area that will be reinvested in Brevard. So another point I wanted to make is the prioritization process of CFX is so important. And that's why I'm asking you to weigh in. If you were Kingford Day and you wanted to tell a five-county regional agency how to prioritize projects, we'd love to, you know, get your input. Right now, we base it on demand, the viability of the project, and the community needs. And of course, we do not, we are not in the habit of delivering transportation solutions that a community doesn't want.
And a couple other points. A question for you. In terms of the causeways, because I know that's something of tremendous importance, probably to every single one of us sitting up here, and probably, I'd venture to say, the bulk of the folks sitting in the audience as well, for, both for transportation purposes and also for water, out of water quality concerns, is it likely, or has there been any thought given to the extent to which 528 might be switched over from FDOT to CFX? In terms of whether that transfer would include one or both of the causeways? Or is it thought that it would go up just to the extent that the mainland goes to, and then it would stop prior to crossing over either of the rivers?
I really can't answer that question, but what I can tell you is that CFX owns and operates the beach line where it starts at McCoy Road, and that's about eight miles in from I-4, all the way to State Road 520. And then the remainder of the beach line, from 520 to the east to US-1, and then from McCoy back to I-4, is owned by the Florida Department of Transportation. There is a request from our local community to transfer those roadways owned by the Florida Department of Transportation to CFX. But it's because they really want locals to have a say in how those roads are managed and operated. And the reason why Brevard County might be interested in that also is to also say that the tolls that are collected by the Florida Department of Transportation, if they were collected by a local agency such as CFX, they would stay here in the regional area.
And let me, let me ask you, too. As far as locals having a say, it sounds great, but I'm trying to understand a little better in terms of what the difference would be with CFX versus FDOT, if it's just that there are fewer entities involved, or fewer municipalities and localities involved. And I ask that with particular focus to State Road 528 because we had some plans that FDOT frankly was trying to just steam right on through with that I don't think many of us up here were happy with. But that said, our TPO had passed a resolution. We had passed a resolution. The IRL Council, I believe, passed a resolution while I was on there a couple of years ago, basically encouraging them to rethink the design, focusing more on water flow and some other concerns. And we were able to essentially put that on hold to get that reevaluated. And while I'm not always thrilled with FDOT, and frankly, I think your roads by and large are in fact better managed, I don't feel like we didn't have a say with it. It seems like we did in fact have a say. And I just, I think when it comes to certain buzzwords, good or bad, that the more specificity we have in proposals, the better it is. Because from my perspective, again, with this road running dead through the heart of my district, surprises are bad. And I, I'll make the same offer to you that I've made to every one of my constituents. If I know how I'm going to vote on something prior to the meeting, if you call and ask me, or email and ask me, I'll tell you how I'm going to vote on it. But if I don't know all of the specifics, all of the material questions prior to getting to a meeting, I'm probably just not going to support it until I have a chance to run by my constituents what the impact would be to them, and whether or not it's something they would support. So again, I just, you know, it's not that I'm not willing to look at it. It's not that I'm categorically opposed to it by any means. I think there are a lot of advantages that come with having CFX take over a portion of that roadway. I'm just concerned about the specifics in terms of how it might be implemented. So as far as a feasibility study is concerned, if that's something that CFX wants to undergo, using predominantly CFX money, you know, by all means, if you think it's something that's beneficial for the organization, certainly go for it. But if it's going to be involving county funds over and above what we put into CFX, I would just say, from my perspective, I would need more specificity, even if we don't know the precise toll amounts that might be implemented, even a guesstimate based on prior experience running the other roadways in terms of, well, we might have a toll booth here, and tolls would likely run in this range. We might have another toll booth there, and they might run in that range. Because I can't, from my perspective, again, and you may have three others up here that aren't as concerned about it, I don't know. But I can't support spending any county funds over what we invest in CFX until I have a better idea of what the end goal looks like. So again, it's not, I don't mean to come across as totally negative toward it, but there are a lot of concerns, and a lot of my constituents understandably are impacted by this, more so perhaps than all of the other, all the other districts' constituents, perhaps even combined. So it's something I look forward to working with you and seeing what you have. But again, the biggest thing in terms of having a higher likelihood of my support behind anything is having all that material that you're able to provide in advance, provided in advance. So I, again, I appreciate you coming out here. I don't want it to come across as overly negative. But this is just, it's such a major change that's talked about. It makes me a little queasy if I don't have those specifics.
Well, honestly, I don't take it as negative feedback because all of the things, you've covered a lot, and I'm going to try to remember the main ones.
Yes, ma'am.
The water flow issue for the older bridges throughout central Florida. It's not just the 528. I'm hearing this concern throughout central Florida. The water flow issues as bridges get replaced and rebuilt is extremely important. And it must be fixed as these bridges are rebuilt, no matter who does it, whether it's CFX or the Florida Department of Transportation. The Florida Department of Transportation does a great job. And if they are studying those bridges and providing a fix for you, that's wonderful. We are here to work together with the Florida Department of Transportation. Not, we are not here to replace, believe me, we are not here to replace any project that's already funded, that's for sure. We're here to fill the gap. The Central Florida Expressway is here to fill the gap when no other solution is available and expressway is direly needed. In central Florida, that's a big deal. In many, many large central Florida areas, you know, I mean, in many, many large areas like central Florida where that's not an option, there is very little options left, you know, where money's not available. So the foresight that our legislatures had in the 1960s to start this system really, really was a blessing in disguise because without it, we would have no last option. So I hope I covered most of your concerns, but we are not here to replace any type of work that's already funded, for sure.
I appreciate it. And I, I don't want to, yeah.
You know, I think what we might take advantage of is maybe setting up some time with you and going over our individual district situations and give you a little bit of time to prepare.
I would love the opportunity to do that.
I think that would be wonderful. So I think you might be hearing from some of our offices, and we can do that, so we're not kind of hitting you on the spot right now. But you have answered beautifully.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I'm looking forward to spend a little bit of time with you.
I look forward to it. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am. We are moving into consent agenda. Commissioners, do you have any consent items you'd like to have polled?
I'd like to poll two.
F2, sir?
F2, yes, ma'am.
Okay, we're going to poll F2 before I make a motion to approve the other. Sandra Sullivan's got a card on F36. Ma'am, if you would come forward and address your concern?
36?
Yes, sir.
Good morning. Sandra Sullivan, South Patrick Shores. As you know, it has been a concern of our community regarding the sand renourishment. In the last meeting I was here, I showed some photos comparing and contrasting the beach in Satellite Beach compared to the beach in South Patrick Shores. So in Satellite Beach, you have hardening of the coastline. Obviously, that's going to have a different sand renourishment issue than South Patrick Shores, which has good policy and naturally renourishes. So I understand that this document is probably being signed because of the lawsuit that the owners of the properties won. I'm, I don't know if that's true. I'd like a clarification on that. I'm, I don't know if that's true, I'd like a clarification on that. But I just wanted to point out that there's a number of issues that we, that we have regarding this sand renourishment project. The Corps of Engineers put a mitigation reef several miles to the south, down, oh, that's upside down, down here, and we're talking, our area of the densest reef is between Patrick Air Force Base and Hightower, which is here. And it's in a different ecological zone, it's out in deeper water. And so basically, they circumvented state and federal law in order to put the sand renourishment on. But the point about talking about Satellite Beach and South Patrick Shores is in the Olson reporting, there's, that area is not delineated separately, so you have an area in Satellite Beach, which is narrow beach, just doesn't take as much volume as sand, and then you have South Patrick Shores with a wide beach, it's going to take a much greater volume of sand, and then it means out, you don't really get the full picture. There's other things that the BOEM report by Corps of Engineers requires, and that is transit study of the reef. The Florida Oceanographic have done a recent lecture on the nearshore reef, showing there's not enough research on the impact, and I'm getting out of time. The report, Olson report also downplays what they did, so on here, it just shows a little bit of sand here, but in actual fact, that was taken before several other layers were put in. This is what pictures I took. This is in the middle of it, there's a whole lot more volume of sand than what they put in their Olson report. I documented for months the crabs and other organisms washing up dead. And so while the, the actual worm, cell, I don't even want to try to say that, while this regenerates on the reef, the other critters that get buried do not.
Thank you ma'am.
So, what I'm asking is, would there be more of a study done?
Thank you ma'am.
Impact study.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to approve all the consent item besides F2?
Ma'am.
Motion? It's okay, y'all, let's just speak a second. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Zanka, Commissioner Lober.
Just before you do that, I have a couple of questions for Ms. Bentley on F-36, if that's all right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Ms. Bentley, I'm just trying to make sure I'm on the same page, I know that we've discussed this previously. My understanding is to have 36, was that the, the only thing we're doing is trying to ensure continuity in the language between the PPA and the Army Corps, and that in effect, quite literally, the only thing we would be doing is, in the PPA, instead of reading "continued public use," we'd strike the word "continued" and have it read "public use," to be more in, in line with the phrase "public use and access," which is what the Corps requires.
We're trying to get the PPA to match the easement language, "public use and access" exactly, so that matches.
Yeah, I just want to make sure, from, from your perspective as well, because I, this is how I take it, this isn't going to impact anything other than whether or not the language coincides, so this isn't something that changes any party's obligations under the agreements, or either modifies to add, detract, or to pick different locations, or otherwise change, any other term within the agreement.
Correct, just those words.
Okay, I appreciate it.
Do you have a motion, a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, passes 5-0. Commissioner Lober, F2, sir?
All right, on F2, I'm not going to make a huge sticking point on this, because I think it's a relatively small portion of the overall item here, but I do want to point out, I do have concerns with one of the projects that's included in here. I spoke with Randy Fine last week in person about this, he had indicated that although he's going to be in Tallahassee this week, and he's there now, otherwise he would have been here, that he's willing to have discussions with me and/or with Natural Resources, I'm sure he'd be willing to discuss with you all as well, I didn't specifically ask that though, about potential alternatives to this one project that is a concern to me. The, the algal scrubbing item that is included along with smoke testing, which I think is great, pardon me, and septic the sewer, which is great, and, and putting houses on advanced septic, which is great. The algal scrubbing portion of it, and I, I don't know how many people we have here, probably what, 40 people, 50 people in the room, I'm probably the only guy that has an algal scrubber in his house. I've had one for years. It wasn't cheap even for something that worked on a, you know, 150, 200 gallon system like I have for my little reef tank. It's, it's a pretty simple system in that the idea, at least for an aquarium, is, it's a means of filtration, kind of in a nutshell, where it serves a couple of different goals, one of which applies to the lagoon. One of the goals is, if you have nutrients in the water, and you don't want to have algae in your main tank, your display tank, if you have a sump or another area where you, where you do your filtration, if you intentionally grow algae there, it removes nutrients from the water so that you don't have that algae in your main tank. The other thing is, it also removes the nutrients, which is good. In order to work, it needs a couple of things, it needs nutrients in the water, or else the algae isn't going to grow. It also needs some source of light, otherwise the algae isn't going to grow. But the, the other item that's needed after it does its job, over and apart those two in order to get the growth, is you need something to clean it out. It is a, from my perspective, as someone that's had an algae scrubber for a number of years, it's very labor-intensive if it does its job effectively, in that the more that it pulls out, the more you have to do in order to keep it clean. You take out the bulk of the algae, but you leave enough that it's seeded so that it grows again, with the idea being that as you pull the algae out, you have less nutrients, but you don't pull all of it out, so it's able to regrow. I, I can tell you, out of all the filtration that I've put in place, it's probably one of the most expensive, in terms of bang for the buck for what I get, and this to me, it looks like it's something of a, of a study. I, I'm fine with everything else that they've listed, but I would just ask that if we approve this, that we also ask Natural Resources to get with Randy Fine and with DEP. As I understand from having spoken with Virginia, the real, I guess, the real difficulty in getting this to where it was, was that there were a couple of different parties involved, and that since Randy Fine did in fact secure the money for the county, which I'm very appreciative of, this is something that he would essentially need to, to greenlight as well, but he's said he's willing to consider it. I would just ask that we give Natural Resources direction to contact him, and make sure he's still okay with the algae scrubbing, or if he's, if he'd like to go in a different direction, which I suspect may be the case, that they go ahead and they bring that one particular portion back to us. So I, if it's okay, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the item, with the caveat that we give Natural Resource, Natural Resources the direction to speak with Randy, or to communicate with Randy's office, to, to see if that's the direction he wants to go as far as the algae scrubbing, and if not, to bring that portion back to us.
A motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Passes 4-1 with Commissioner Tobias in objection. Okay, we're going to move into public comment. I have three comment cards. Commissioners, I'm going to ask that all the comments are done before we ask questions, just allow the public to have freedom to speak. Mr. Dennis Dyer, you are first, sir, Sandra Sullivan, then Ralph Livingston.
Good morning, Dennis Dyer, District 4, Mr. Smith's section. I'd like to talk to you about animal control. Few years ago, they, people moved in next door and they had two boxers. And apparently, they would put them in the backyard, which was fenced along my property line, and then they would leave. This went on, I talked to the owners, no, no, no resolution. And then, the dogs started to come over, and it got more and more aggressive to me until on February 28th of last year, they got me cornered, and they attacked me. They sent me to the emergency room, I had 14 puncture wounds and some lacerations. After this happened, I talked with the Krista Crump Supervisor of Animal Control, she said, asked if they could be declared dangerous. She said, no, because I didn't get any stitches. I read the ordinance, which she said she asked the county attorney about, she said, no, got to have stitches, you can't be dangerous. Then there's a lesser ordinance, aggressive. She said, no, they couldn't be declared aggressive, because that ordinance pertained to dogs on dogs, or dogs on domestic animals, not people. So, problem consists. Talked to them about barking, it seems like the way it's written, the nuisance ordinance, the dog can bark for 30 minutes, then quiet for 30 seconds. This means in an hour period, the dog gets his 30-second silence, project this out to the day, 24 hours. Do the math, looks like 24 hours, the dogs can bark for 20, more than 23 and a half hours a day. I would like for the commission, if it can, see if we can get a better timeframe on the nuisance. I'd like to have the aggressive thing changed to include people. Dangerous, I see nothing in the ordinance about stitches. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Sandra Sullivan, South Patrick Shores. So first, I'd like to comment on the CFX. It's concerning to me that this was not put on as an agenda item, allowing public comment. And in the section, it allowed for five minutes, she spoke well beyond that, I timed it, it was nearly eight minutes. I also am concerned about some of her comments, when asked about how far the toll road goes, because their own documents show it only goes as far as US-1. And she was very evasive on that answer, and did not answer directly. And then, pertaining to about working with FDOT, her letter, the letter from, that was sent to the state representatives, and in their documents clearly shows that their way of operating is to circumvent the FDOT and use local board, it has to have local board authorization, to go to the state and circumvent FDOT with going to the governor. And that is in their own writing. So if that's how they're starting with you, how trustworthy are they? Number two, the lagoon meeting has, in three months, not addressed the manatee mortality event, which is now at a federal level. In the lagoon meeting on Friday, not the sorrel, the other one, they addressed that Fish and Wildlife have found calupa algae in the stomachs of man, of the necropsis, which, I did some search on the scientific literature, is very toxic, okay? So, this should be a discussion at the county level, and I would question why that's not on that, on that meeting for three months, given that we've had in Brevard County about 300 manatees die. The third issue is Hightower, and I just want to comment that the county attorney's office determined that the skybridge violated the public use aspect of, of the former county park. The state has compliance issues, as is indicated by emails that I got yesterday, showing that the city's now maneuvering to rewrite their management plan with a firm out of Orlando, which brings up some other controversies, I'll leave for another day. And third, the federal, the federal government, as well with US Fish and Wildlife Service, have also determined that Patrick Air Force Base violated federal law with regard to the Section 7, under the Endangered and Threatened Species Act, by not putting the requested covenants in it. It's like a domino effect, if one of the, the levels of government will take action, the rest will click into place, it'll be dominos falling over. I ask this county commission to take action. Thank you.
Mr. Ralph Livingston?
Good to see you, sir.
Ralph Livingston, 800 North Fitz Boulevard, Department 403, Cocoa, Florida. Still nervous. I want to say thanks to Commissioner Lober, Commissioner Zanka, and Commissioner Pritchett for your consideration. I'm here today to readdress the coaching, volunteer coaching issues. I just left the Parks and Recreation here in Vieira. They're short, four to five basketball coaches for the youth basketball program. It all boils down, in my way of looking at it, the administrative order. I appreciate that you guys are looking into it, and are looking to hopefully tweak it somehow, but my concern is that we're talking about kids of today that are lacking coaches, and I know you're supposed to go back and look at it in July, but you know, what about May, June, and further on? There are so many people that, you know, it's just so much to be said, three minutes don't seem to be enough, but my thing is that maybe consider looking at the way Brevard County Schools do their volunteers. You know, what other program deals with kids more than the school system? That's what I'm here for today. And it really came home with me to be here today because of, I found out the lack of coaches that they have for the basketball program this season, along with me just participating in Vieira Charter's school for the track team, where I mentioned last time I was here, there was two coaches coaching 40-plus kids. We had a good season, but just imagine if it was just that one coach, or no coaches. There are a lot of people who I think qualify to be coaches or volunteers, because, and it's not just me, you know, I'm not going to be here forever, this is a future thing. And that's why I'm here today, to just reiterate upon it some more, and I do appreciate the effort that is being given now to consider it. But me finding out about the lack of basketball coaches, and what I just went through with the track team, I just wanted to readdress it, to let you know that this is an ongoing thing. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Livingston.
You're welcome.
Thank you. We are moving into public hearings, we have item H1, Ms. Bentley. Is this you, ma'am?
This is the CDD item, this is the Farmington CDD. The board approved legislative intent to advertise the repeal of this ordinance. This CDD is being merged into the Farmington stewardship.
I have one card, is this for questions only, Mr. Johnson?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I like this project, can I, well, whatever y'all want to do, but I'll support it. I have a motion to approve it.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, passes 5-0.
Hi. Item H2, so in February of this year, at the budget hearing, it was approved to replace the Consumer Price Index, Index with the Water Sewerage Maintenance Index. In order to follow proper procedure, we had to advertise for 20 days, and present it at a commission meeting for final approval, and that's what this agenda is.
Okay, sir. Commissioners, Commissioner Lober?
I think this is one of those that we've, we've hashed out, I believe at the budget workshop, in quite a bit of detail, there is a lot in term of, in terms of a lot of our thoughts up here, as to where we stand on this issue. The bottom line, I think the shortest way to put it for folks that haven't heard it before, is that when our costs go up a certain percentage for utilities, that money has to come from somewhere. We can't print it, we don't have a money tree that I'm aware of in Brevard County, that would be nice to look at, maybe putting O'Neill's Land, a couple of money trees, see how that, how that takes, but until we figure out how to accomplish that, the bottom line is, for a utility like this, the costs have to be passed on. If CPI goes up 1% and utilities go up 3% for a particular year, that, that money, it doesn't miraculously show up in the account. So this to me, it makes sense in the sense that we're, we're tying the closest, most accurate index to the system that we're looking at maintaining and potentially improving, so I'm supportive of it.
Is that a motion, sir?
I'll make it a motion. I'll make it a motion.
Motion to approve, second by Commissioner Smith, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, passes five zero. Item H3? Commissioner Tabaya, this was you, wasn't it, sir?
Yes, Madam Chair. And since I asked for legislative intent on this one and permission to advertise, there's been some developments. HB 735, which preamps local government from requiring certain licensing, including those that we discussed, was passed. It was passed with bipartisan support in the legislature. However, the preemption of licensing these trades would not go into effect till 2023. So instead of, you know, going through this, I'd like to ask the board, would you rather wait till 2023 or go ahead and do the preemption prior to that? I, of course, would prefer doing that immediately. However, if this board would decide to go in a different direction, I certainly don't want to waste anyone's time up here. So I'd like to see where everyone else is, and go from there, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Tabaya, I'm gonna support it. You gave me time to go do a little bit of research on it, and I think it's a good proposal. So you have my support. Commissioner Loebur?
I'll tell you, Commissioner Tabaya, I certainly am fine with, with the inclusion of painting contractors here. I think worst case, if someone has a guy that has no idea what they're doing, they end up with a crummy paint job, no one's gonna die on account of that. However, when you go to the other extreme toward masonry or framing, I start to have issues, because now you're talking about structural portions of a particular building. So there's some in here I'm fine eliminating now, and there are others where I do kind of balk a little bit, it makes me wince. But you know, let's, let's see how the others are, because I'll certainly support you at least in part.
Commissioner Smith?
I'll agree with Commissioner Loebur. Well, I think it's okay to remove some of these for the reason that Commissioner Loebur stated. There are some that, you know, if you have somebody that just wants to put up some framing to put a roof on, and they don't know what they're doing. I know some counties in the south, I have some friends that bought a property in Tennessee, and they wanted to build a new house on their property. And actually, they had a house, and they wanted to enlarge it. So they went to the county seat and asked how they went about getting a building permit. And of course, they were asked what for, and they told them. And they were told, you just go build it. If it falls down, it's your problem. Pretty simplistic, right? But I don't think we operate that way here in Brevard County. So I, I think that we need to look out for the safety of our, our residents and prevent somebody from just building a house or a shed that really don't know what they're doing.
I had, I had that concern as well, then I asked staff, and they said they would catch it before it got through permitting. So I got a little more comfort. Commissioner Zanka?
Yeah, and I, to go off of what you're saying, Chairwoman, not only would it be caught through permitting, it would also be caught through inspections. I mean, we require a gazillion inspections in this county. So if we're not doing our job, then shame on us. But I don't see that as being the case. I know we do a very thorough job when we send out our inspectors. So I mean, they're inspecting the masonry, they're inspecting the floor covering, they're inspecting the, the paint, whatever. So I have, I have no problem supporting it the way it stands.
Commissioner Tabaya?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I'm not interested in piecemealing this. There are seventy-six members of the Florida House, they're Republicans. All seventy-six got together and said, this is probably too much government. So if there's a no vote, there would be more no votes on this county commission than there would be in the entire Florida House. So it sounds like the three votes are there, one way or another, this is happening. The question is whether or not you trust individuals as opposed to government. But anyway, so I'll make the motion to adopt the ordinance amendment as attached to the agenda, Madam Chair.
Okay, motion is second, I'm sorry, ma'am?
No cards?
No, ma'am. I do, I do. Nathan, I do have your card, yes, sir, I do.
Madam Chair?
So yes, let me let Mr. Slusher speak first, and then come on, come on up, sir.
Hi, good morning. My name is Nathan Slusher, I live at eight six, eight six zero Allendale in Titus Hall. I own and raise LLC. We do property maintenance and service calls for real estate agencies and apartment complexes from MEMS to Malabar. And this actually directly affects companies like mine. Currently, in Brevard County, you have to have licenses for painting, floor covering, which includes tiling, or LVTs, or anything that, it doesn't include subflooring. So if you're on a second level, it doesn't include the safety process. It's just the tile you lay on the floor. However, Brevard County also allows you to put tile up a wall without having that license, the occupational license. It doesn't cover wall tiling, it only covers floor tiling. So while they're putting rocks ten feet up, they can't lay them on the floor. The structural issue is regulated by the state of Florida. So even if I'm allowed to do framing of non-structural walls in a house by Brevard County, I still would not be allowed to do structural walls on the exterior of a house, or any load-bearing walls on the interior of the home. So if this is approved, then a company like mine, or any, any, really, it affects any property maintenance company, any handyman business out there, any just general repair business or renovation business, they would still not be allowed to do door framing, window framing, structural framing. When it comes to masonry, it's the same way. They wouldn't be able to do structural, because it's load-bearing. However, however, if a client, one of my clients backs their car into their concrete wall around their garden, I can't repair it if I don't have that occupational license from Brevard County. Even if it's only two blocks, it's still not allowed. So I just want to use my company as a real example of, this really does affect Brevard County citizens. And even if it's passed, it doesn't affect the safety aspect of it, because that's highly regulated by the state of Florida, and I'm not allowed to touch it.
Thank you, Mr. Slusher.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith, sir?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And hearing the thoughts and opinions of my fellow commissioners, I will be supporting this.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Loebur?
Just a couple thoughts, and if you all want to support it, by all means, go for it. But I just don't think we should support it if we're relying on information that may not be entirely accurate, as to some of the things we've heard. So we heard that, from the gentleman that came up to speak, that, that at least portions of what are, what's included in this are already regulated by the state of Florida. But we just heard as well from Commissioner Tabaya, that that's not gonna be the case in 2023, that these are essentially being deregulated at the state level. So to say, well, we don't have to do it because the state's doing it, yeah, for the next two years. So I think that's kind of a specious argument. As far as the, the contention that the structural portions dealing with framing and things of that sort aren't permitted anyway, or that this wouldn't impact that, I don't know that that's accurate. There's nothing in the agenda item that says that this is still disallowing folks, or a disallowance would still exist for folks that are doing structural portions of framing. So I don't know that that's correct either. The last thing I would point out is that the current licensing, licensing structure allows staff, and by extension, the county, to have an opportunity to help resolve issues that residents face with folks that are licensed. If we do away with the licensing and something happens that's unfortunate or catastrophic, we don't have the same ability to intervene on behalf of residents who have problems with folks that, in, in the case this passes, aren't licensed by us. So with that, you know, vote how you will, but those are my concerns.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, no other lights, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed?
Nay.
Passes four one with Commissioner Loebur in objection. We're moving to item H4.
Do we have any cards on H4?
I do, that's why Mr. Knox is moving forward. I could tell he thought I was gonna forgive him.
Good morning.
Hello, sir.
Good to see you all again.
Nice to see you.
I'm here on H4, which involves signalization at an intersection between North Wickham Road and Deer Lake Park. We've been working on this for a long time, and we were like ninety-nine percent of the way home when this inflationary spiral in construction costs started to take place. So my client just got the bids on his project last Friday, I think, and they reviewed them over the weekend. The cost on the project has accelerated from one million and forty-nine thousand, I think it was, forty-nine, forty-nine thousand, yes, to about two-hundred-and-thirty-one thousand dollars more than that. And according to the contract that we have before you today, that would be my compliance burden to pick up, and he's really not in a position to do that at this point. So either we've got to get that price down somehow, or the project is gonna have to go by the wayside. So what we're asking today is that you either postpone this till the July meeting, so we can have a chance to talk to the contractors who bid on the project, see if we can get this down to where it's close to what it was before, or if we can do some other way of handling this. But at this point, it's not economically feasible for my client, so we would ask you either to postpone it or continue the meeting until, continue this public hearing until July.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Loebur?
I'll do whatever you want on this, Commissioner Smith. It's your district, you tell me.
Well, I'm going to make a motion that we postpone this until July to give Mr. Knox's client a chance to run, run through these numbers to see if he can make it work.
Okay, I have a motion at the table, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Loebur?
To a date certain, because it's an advertised hearing.
Right, whatever the first date, first meeting in July.
July sixth.
July the sixth?
July the sixth.
Okay. Motion holds, I'm sure.
Yes.
Second holds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, passes five zero. Good to see you, Mr. Knox. You did leave us in good hands with Ms. Bentley, but we do miss you. Okay, we're moving into item H5. This is the Health First item. I have cards, but it says that it is for questions only. Commissioners, do we have any?
Madam Chair?
Motions?
Motion to approve the ordinance to create a non-ad valorem special assessment for the Medicaid Managed Care for direct payment programs for local hospitals.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second? Commissioner Zanka, did you, is that your line? I have a second by Commissioner Tabaya, Mr. Zanka?
Yeah, I have to abstain due to my relationship with Health First as an employee. So I want that for the record.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, passes five zero. Four zero. Sorry, I hate leaving you out. Okay, moving into unfinished business, item I1. I do have one card on that, on this one, Mr. Kirschenbaum, sir. So, Yuri? Okay, thank you, sir.
We come before you to request authorization to initiate the construction of the US 192 and send a notification to the Deseret Ranch that we are going to assume responsibility for the property so we can start construction on it. We have to send this notification a hundred and twenty days before, according to the settlement agreement. Several things have happened since the last time we met. Last time we met, we, we were talking about the possibility of several options. One of the things that came about was the Florida recyclers. Florida recyclers had submitted a request to the city of Melbourne for going beyond the current forty feet. And the city of Melbourne determined this to be deficient. So that's not to say that they cannot resubmit that, but that's what it's considered right now deficient. So they would have to make changes in order to resubmit. DEP, which is the Department of Environmental Protection, recently came to the apartments to the east of our property that had some complaints regarding odor. The odors were determined to be of mulch. The odors, they could not determine where they came from. The inspectors went to Florida recyclers and determined that Florida recyclers did produce mulch, and it did smell of mulch. They came to our site and made the same determination. What they could not do is determine where the odors were migrating offsite. So since they couldn't do that, we were both declared guilty. They are in the process of going through their internal review, and what they, we have been told is that we will be having some kind of a consent and, and a fine. And every time that this occurs, the fine will double the amount that we need. Another thing that occurred is that in the January meeting that we had, we received permission to sign the US Army Corps of Engineer permit, which we did. We send it to the US Army Corps of Engineer. They sat on it for several months. Those weeks became months, and they suddenly told us that they are no longer doing that, that they sent it to the Florida Department of Environmental Protection. And they reviewed their records, and for some strange reason, our permit was not forwarded to Department of Environmental Protection. So we had to resubmit some additional paperwork that the department wanted. We do not expect any major problems, it's just an additional delay on the, on the issues. We have also estimated that our landfill would last until the year 2023. But I did some analysis of it, and those, that projection is about a year old. The new projection hasn't come out, and isn't expected to come out until midsummer or late summer. But we do have the yearly increases. What we have seen in the Sarna landfill is an average of a sixteen percent increase over the prior year, and that's in tonnage. Out of the twelve months, there was ten months of increases, anything from two percent all the way up to thirty-six percent, with two months of, of decrease over the prior year. Having said that, in 2021, the three months have been decreased over 2020, but it's still, the volume has been consumed, and I really expect the, the life, as determined by the engineers, to be a lot less. So the Army, the Department of Transportation, one of the things that they have told us is that they will, no construction is allowed on-site until turn lanes are built. Those turn lanes have to be fully built before the construction, any kind of construction can start on-site. A fence has to be built also in order to divide the north and the south for Deseret to, to reoccupy the north, which has to be built before the, the turn lanes are built. So pretty much, there's a series of projects that have to be done. It is not one construction contract, this is a multitude of construction contracts because of the nature of what they're building and the sequence in which they have to be built. So what we're doing is, we're requesting permission to send that letter to Deseret, and we are requesting permission to start contract as soon, as soon as we can. By starting construction, I said start contract, starting construction. And please realize that for me, putting up a fence is a construction activity. So we respectfully request those two items.
Thank you, sir. Yuri, can you tell me what construction items that, that has to be done right now? When I had a meeting with you, you said in that list there were some that you had to have done now, and there were some that could potentially wait a few months.
The turn lane has to be built, and the fence has to be put in as part of the turn lanes, that means some, in turn, right after a turn lane, some internal roads have to be built. Those internal roads are dirt roads, they are not asphalted roads at the beginning, and some stormwater has to be done. One of the last activities to be done is the scale house, because that would be a totally different construction contractor. And the actually building of the landfill itself, putting down the liner and that kind of stuff, that would be one of the last activities to be done also.
So as, as a commission right now, we're still trying to figure out any other opportunities, that's one that we could wait on and come back to later, correct?
Yes, ma'am, the timing of it is different, and the contractors are different.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Commissioners, any questions, response, comments? Commissioner Loebur? Loeb?
Yeah, I'll just put out there, from my perspective, this has been one of those items that's come up over the past two and a half years that I've been here, that I've not really loved. And I've scratched my brain, racked my brain, doing some due diligence on this, a lot of due diligence on this with staff independently. I was hoping that we would see Florida recyclers get their CUP from Melbourne. I've got to be honest, I was not horribly optimistic that that would take place, but I was hoping that it would. It hasn't happened. I would still like to keep our options open as long as we possibly can, as you alluded to, Chair Pritchett. That said, I think what you were alluding to, or what you were getting toward, as far as maybe the best path forward, is to do what we have to do so that we don't put ourselves in a position that we can't dig out of, but not do any more than that at this point.
Yes, sir. I think Yuri said, you know, the entranceway, stormwater, which approved the land anyways, but we don't start on the construction of the landfill with scale house in Class 3, Cell 1 construction.
If staff is good with that, I would make a motion to do the, hopefully this is sufficient. I'll kind of defer to Yuri and Eden as well, to do the minimum necessary to keep this option open for us, such that we don't run into any timeframe issues with getting it constructed by the time we need to. Is that a sufficiently specific motion, Eden? I'm trying to keep it relatively open-ended so that I don't direct staff to do something that they either do or don't have to do, because I don't have the expertise to know which of these items has to be done now versus six months from now.
I think Yuri is the best to answer that, because he's got to do the permits, et cetera.
The answer, sir, is yes. Just please realize that the biggest timeline is the construction of the landfill itself, so that's around, it could be anywhere from 14 to 18 months. So you might be seeing somebody here within the next six months to talk about that.
So what would you need right now in terms of authorization from the board to keep our options open? So if you need to construct the landfill, I'm sure there are ways to segment the construction, so there's certain portions that you would need to do now, so that if we do find that there's another option, we don't pour in more money than we have to, if it's something that we could, in theory, back out of down the road?
Yes, sir. The way I see it is, turn lanes are an improvement to the property and could add value to the property. Stormwater is the same thing, regardless of what use you put to the property at the end of the day. You know, interior road going out, it's dirt. It is not asphalt. It's true that it's going to be the base of a future permanent road, but it's still a dirt road. All the stormwater, the berm to, you would have to be built to hide, is the only thing that will probably not add value to it, but it needs to be done also beforehand.
So those four items?
Fence.
Oh, and, sorry, the fence. I forgot about the fence. So the turn lanes, the stormwater improvements, the interior dirt, non-paved road, or unpaved road, I should say, the berm and a fence?
Yes.
That's what you need now?
And please realize that when I'm talking about stormwater, right before the stormwater, you got to do all the wetland mitigation that's required in it. So let's just call it dirt-moving activities without having to actually build a landfill and/or a scale house.
Yuri, let me do it this way, if you're all right with it. It's a little different. I'll go ahead. I'll make my motion instead, amend it to authorize staff to put in turn lanes, stormwater, interior dirt road, berm and fence, and any other activities that are necessary in order to effectuate those directions. So that would include wetland...
And that would include the notice to Deseret.
It would include the notice to Deseret. It would include whatever you have to do with respect to wetland mitigation, but it would do nothing more than that?
I believe that would work, sir.
Okay, that'll be my motion at this point, then.
Okay, I have a motion.
I'll second that.
I have a second by Commissioner Smith. Commissioner Zanka?
I didn't realize my button didn't press. Maybe I didn't press it hard enough. Obviously, you guys know where I stand on this. I think I've made it pretty well-known. You know, I'm going through this report, and I remember we had discussed, I don't want to go through it point by point, because obviously the votes are there to move forward with this, but I know we addressed the mulch before, and leading with your presentation saying the mulch had an odor. If everything were to go perfectly well, and we were to buy this property, the mulch would be taken care of, whether that be a deal that we make with the mulch, or whether to get rid of it, or whether that be Florida recyclers. That would be part of it, because we have no use for the mulch. So this odor thing is a non-issue, at least as far as, you know, being a total detriment to the property. I am curious to find out, you know, I didn't call, and I probably should have, but again, I already knew the votes weren't there to support stopping this from moving forward, but I'm curious to find out what's happening with the city of Melbourne. Is it okay if I ask Mr. Kirschenbaum?
Oh, sure.
Because I know he's, is that okay?
Sure.
Or Bruce, or whoever can answer the question.
Something interesting too, Ms. Zanka. We, I talked to Yuri. He was gonna, he tried to approach the FAA to loosen the height restrictions so that we could lengthen our time at ours as well. So I just wanted to let you know that as well.
Hi, good morning, commissioners. Bruce Moya with MBV Engineering. We are the engineer of record for the project to get a conditional use from the city of Melbourne for the height for this property. We've made submittals, several submittals. There has been staff comments, as with any other submittal. Staff at the city of Melbourne does recommend approval or denial of things that are provided to their PNZ and city council. From what we understand, staff will not be supporting our request, but that doesn't mean it's not going to move forward to the PNZ and city council for their consideration. So we're in that process. We have not been scheduled to go before a public hearing yet, but we think that's coming soon. So we're working with staff just to address their technical comments so that we can get to submittal, or get to public hearing.
Now, is it, as part of your submittal, because I haven't seen it, do you, I guess, talk about the prospect of the county purchasing the property, or do you?
No.
Do you submit it with the request that you're requesting the, I mean, I'm sure that they know your intentions. Obviously, in your world, the perfect, you know, scenario would be the county purchasing the property.
That's one option that we're obviously pursuing, but for that property, continue to operate, and what it's doing now, we need the additional height regardless.
Okay.
So we're making that height request so we can continue the operation. As a matter of fact, one of the problems, I guess, we had with the application is, the height was already being exceeded. That was being, that was permitted. So we're bringing the property back into compliance, because we've already exceeded what we're allowed to do. That's why we need the additional height. So we're bringing the property into compliance so that we can move forward with the submittal, because, you know, it's, the way it operates, it fluctuates very quickly, but at the time when the inspection was made, the height was being exceeded. So we bring the property to conformance, and then we'll be moving forward with getting the public hearing. But yes, we do need it regardless of the county purchasing the property.
Okay. Does anybody have more questions for Bruce?
One question.
Sir?
Thank you, Madam Chair. It sounds like you're close on, how many, was there just one or two deficiencies listed?
It's been quite a process. While we submitted this over a year ago, we're still going back and forth with the city to get their technical questions resolved, because they seem to grow as we go through the process. We didn't get a full set of comments, and then just windled them down. They have...
New comments with every...
They've had some new comments, and we've had some new challenges, and they've discovered some things along the way. So we've been addressing them as quickly as we possibly can, but it's, it has been taking some time, a lot more than we thought it was going to take.
I'm sorry, and I didn't go over it. Were there, so there was, so there's only one or two deficiencies listed, or are there more than that?
There was only one non-compliance issue, and that was the height. Everything else is just technical information that they want.
Okay.
But it's a unique project, so they, I'm sure they didn't know everything. They needed all upfront, so they kind of are understanding it better as they go along, but we're pretty close. There's only a few more comments left.
Only a few more comments?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
That's interesting, because I know you don't want to, you don't want to pick on the city of Melbourne, but I find it interesting
No.
that the comments grow, and the time goes on. Another governmental agency.
Yeah, well, it's not a, you know, it's not a convenience store that they've done 20 of them. This is something kind of unique, so it has been a challenge.
But perhaps they could have come to the county and asked the county what they should be asking for.
I'm sure they've talked to the county about it.
I'm sure they have too, Bruce, but that's probably a discussion, not for
Yeah, not for here.
public meeting. All right. I don't have any more questions for Mr. Moya. I would just ask, you know, if the board at least would still consider, assuming that all goes well. I mean, obviously, take into consideration this very detailed eight-page report where some things, you know, clearly are applicable and some aren't, and some things apply to both our own existing landfill at Sarno and some there. At least consider, at least keep them still in consideration, considering that if everything goes as well and is hopeful, and obviously, we want to get it for a good price. I think that's always something that's probably the most important, aside from the environmental issues. But if that site has the potential to increase the life of that landfill by 19 years, we would be neglectful if we didn't consider it.
I'm with you on it.
So, I mean, I don't know.
That's what, we just do those, and this here, we hold on to, and then we've got at least another six months here. We can figure out if they end up getting some permitting done, or approvals done.
And obviously, their options are limited, and I think that goes without saying, you know, on who they can sell to, and so we're sort of at an advantage, because you can see how eager the county is to move forward with our landfill out at the start of our county entrance. So I would prefer not to see that happen, and for as many people that come to these meetings and worry about our environment and complain, I wish more people cared about the fact that we're about to put a dump at the entrance to our county. And not a lot of people care about it, and it's heartbreaking to me, and this has been something, I guess I've been thumping my fist about for a while, and I know there's not a perfect solution. I know that's the easiest solution, but we should be doing everything we can to avoid having to make another footprint out there. So I'm not going to keep fighting, because, you know, it's sort of a moot point, and I'm sort of sound like a broken record at this point, but I'm disappointed, obviously, but hopefully, you know, I'm going to at least be somewhat hopeful that we could do something better, and we could do something sooner, and technology will catch up within that time that we would say, in my perfect world, use the existing site to not have to put that out there on 192, but, so, I mean, I don't know how the commission feels about it. I would just ask that staff be cooperative, you know, at least to a degree, as much as possible, being responsive to American recyclers, and I would ask that you do the same if this board wants us to at least still consider this as an option for us, but I don't know how the board feels about that, or...
I don't disagree with what you said.
Okay. Commissioner Tobias? Were you listening?
I caught most of it, just for staff to be responsive to the questions that...
Yeah, and to at least have the board, the board at least request that we still try to at least consider this as an option.
I have no problem with that. I just pulled up, I must have seen something different, and it looks like there were like 18 different deficiencies listed from Melbourne and on it, so...
Deficiencies, but questions, more questions on their application, I think, more so than...
I get it, I get it, but, I mean, this has been a year in the process, so I understand how people are getting frustrated on this, but certainly, I'm, I would ask that staff be receptive to the continued processes as we go forward.
Okay.
And hopefully, the city of Melbourne won't throw any roadblocks conveniently in their way.
I have a motion and a second on the board, and I'll go ahead and call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Passes 4-1 with Commissioner Zanka, and objection, and staff, we look forward to any kind of creative things you can come back to help extend the existing landfill that we have already. Thank you, sir.
Ms. Bentley?
Sorry.
Ma'am. Do we need a motion on any of that other, the other discussion that occurred as far as direction?
We could do one if you'd like. The direction to, or Yuri, yes, I think specific direction would be helpful.
Okay.
Okay. Commissioner Zanka, do you want to make a motion?
I'll try to make it as detailed and cumbersome as possible. I want to make a motion that we direct staff to continue to explore the opportunity of the purchase, and to assist with any questions that they have regarding height expansion, if they can be helpful to American recyclers, and to at least be receptive to any questions they may have from the county.
Madam Chair, would you, would you be willing, pardon me, I'm sorry, I've lost my voice today. Would you be willing to modify the motion by including the word reasonably prior to assist? If you will, I'm happy to second it.
Reasonably is still a very subjective word, but that's fine.
I'll go ahead and second it, then.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes 5-0, and I'm going to call a five-minute break. Passes five zero, and I'm going to call a five-minute break.[271.72]
And we're coming back with item I two.
Good morning, Commissioners. In response to your direction the Board previously provided to Human Resources, we initiated a recruitment effort to find a next county attorney to assume Ms. Bentley's role upon her retirement. In April, we posted advertisements in a couple of dozen job boards and professional associations, the end result of which were 16 candidates for expressing interest in the position. Also, in accordance with your prior direction, a screening committee made up of myself, the county manager, and the county attorney reviewed those applicants to present for you a short list of top candidates. I have made that information available to you all in previous memos posted on our secured servers. We have identified for you separately the same six candidates that we feel very strongly represent the best of the list. What we're here for today is to begin a conversation to see if you have an interest in reducing that list, adding to that list, substituting individuals from that list, because we've also provided you all of the applications and resumes for all the candidates that provided responses to us, so that we can now initiate from your shortlist background screenings to conduct those investigations through our normal employment background screening, social media searches and such. The ideal would be to have that information in your hands in June in advance of the July 6th Board meeting, where we will then ask you to identify candidates for interview. With that, we open the conversation to see what you would like to have done here.
Okay, just I'm gonna throw mine out there. I like your top six, because my top two are in your top six.
Okay.
So I think you did a very good job with that. So Commissioners, if you've got any you want to add it in, or maybe you can bring that up, but I think you guys did a great job. Commissioner Loeb.
First, I just want to thank you guys that are on that committee for separating the sports cars from the, I don't want to say junkers, God, that's really terrible, but the less capable cars.
The economy models.
The economy models. You know, there are a couple folks, one in particular listed under all remaining applicants that I think could be good. That said, you guys have a good list. I'm not looking to knock the top six that you've identified, just as Commissioner Pritchett said, her top two are in there. There are two that I wanted to see there, and those two are both there as well. I have no idea if they're the same, and I would imagine we probably have at least one that's going to carry over from her list of mine. I'm happy with it. I don't know if you guys are looking for a motion, but you know, my thought is unless one of the other Commissioners wants to see someone moved up, from my perspective, I would like to see all six of them to have the opportunity to consider them. I really don't want to whittle it down further at the committee level, from my perspective. I think you've given us capable people. One of them I've never met. I'd just be interested to hear from them.
Commissioners, do you have a motion or comment?
If I can turn this on. Oh, there we go. Okay, I'll go ahead and move to accept the top candidate list, or the shortlist, if you want to call it that, of the six individuals identified. Abby Jordan B., Bruce Barnard, Morris Richardson, John Carey, Mark Moriarty, and Robert Eschenfelder. And in terms of what you all are looking for staff to incorporate into the motion, should I also include that staff shall take measures, or is requested to take measures, to arrange to have them come to speak before the Commission regarding their applications?
Not at this point, Commissioner. All we're asking is for you to give us a direction to conduct background screenings on those six candidates. We will give you that information.
That's exactly my motion, right there.
Okay.
To conduct background screenings on those six individuals that I identified.
Do you have a motion? Do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Zonka. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Pass this five zero. Thank you for your hard work, sir.
Thank you, Commissioners.
We are moving into item J1.
You like this one, Commissioner Pritchett?
I do.
I'll go ahead and move to approve it.
Do you have a motion to approve?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Pass this five zero. Item J2.
Good morning, Commissioners. Item J2 is approval of the IRL grant guidelines and accompanying documentation. The major change here was a request by the committee to have the applicants give a little bit more detail on the actual impact of their projects.
Motion approved.
Do you have a motion?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Pass this five zero. Item J3. Commissioner Tabia.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and this is just a simple amendment to existing Board policy that hopefully would limit the time that we spend in zoning meetings. I did this because of what happened at the last zoning meeting that really had no connection to any land issues whatsoever. If you recall, one was dealing with litter, and another one was dealing trash, with trash. Both of these items, while very legitimate, had absolutely nothing to do with zoning. And I do understand that these are publicly announced meetings, however, at certain zoning meetings, including the one that we had last time, we had an individual retain services of an attorney, and that person was eating those costs while we were talking about an individual that picked up some trash. So my proposal does not, sorry, does include an exception where the Board finds by a supermajority vote that a delay would detrimentally impact the public if it would, if any emergency arises, but this would just ask that non-zoning items not come, sorry, non-zoning items not appear on the zoning budget, on the zoning agenda, Madam Chair.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Loeb.
Couple of comments. First, I'd like to point out, we do, from time to time, have zoning items on regular meetings. If that's okay, I don't see why the other isn't, especially in the light. And I'll tell you why items are oftentimes put on, from my perspective, from my district, on zoning meetings. They're generally shorter agendas. If we have an agenda like this, where we have forty-something consent items, and we have, you know, stacks of people in the audience, as we did earlier, I don't know that it makes sense to add certain items to a long meeting when we have a short meeting two days later that we can put them on. If folks want to have a six-hour meeting and a thirty-minute meeting, then that's fine, that's the preference, but my thought is if we can balance it out a little bit, especially given the fact that there is cross-pollination going both ways with respect to zoning items and non-zoning items, I don't see it as a problem. As far as the concern that we have people that are paying attorneys waiting, will we have non-zoning items on zoning meetings? If the Chair wants to, in her discretion, move things around at the meetings because someone's paying for counsel, I have no objection to that, but I'm not going to support this.
Commissioner Smith.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I agree with the intent put forward by Commissioner Tabia. However, my one concern would be that if in the case of, let's use, for example, our next zoning meeting, it's coming up on a break, we're going to be out of here for four weeks, if there's something that staff needs to get before us and needs an answer for, this does not provide for that. So if we could amend this to allow staff to interject anything that they deem that's important, that is time-sensitive, then I would support it.
Madam Chair.
Absolutely. This was more aimed at the five of us than it would be staff. Another concern, and a certain staff member did not want me to include this, but you saw staff that didn't normally show up at a zoning meeting have to show up at a zoning meeting, and staff goes above and beyond for us all the time, and to put an even greater concern on those folks is more important of a loss than what our time, you know, would be. So absolutely, that certainly was the intent. It was to limit the Board, not to limit staff to make that decision. It's a good call, one I should have included and would be glad to add, whether you support it or not.
All right, well, if you want to add that, then I'll second your motion.
Do you have a motion? A second, Commissioner Loeb.
I just want to point out, you know, sometimes, even if you're okay with where things are with respect to what's proposed, keep in mind you may have unintended consequences from this as well, and I say that because if I have an item that's informational, like I had in the last zoning meeting, with respect to lagoon water quality, anything of that sort, absolutely nothing precludes me from bringing it up during Board reports, inviting whoever I want, and having a question-and-answer session that lasts far longer than even a noticed agenda item would call for. The only difference is if you pass this, you're precluding my ability to advertise what I intend to discuss to the public. So if you want the public to have less notice and have these things come up in Board reports more often, then by all means, go for it.
Well, let me throw this out. When I first got on here in the city of Titusville, you kept zoning with zoning. This is just recently, we've started getting a little bit of other items coming up. I would request that we, as a Board, would keep the meeting agenda items as the new ones, and keep the zoning on the Zone Board. So Commissioner Tabia, I'm probably going to support this as long as staff can do that. And Commissioner, I would also ask that we, you know, whoever's chairing, that we go with the direction of the Chair, because whoever's here, whether it's Commissioner Zonka or whoever, you know, we have to get these meetings going through quite quickly. So as far as, you know, bringing up a new item and then bringing a bunch of people forward, I'm just going to ask that you run that through the Chair and put it on as an agenda item, like we do at a regular meeting, because all you're going to do is get four other Commissioners cranky with you, and you're not going to get anything passed. So I would like to maintain some order on this Board as far as how we're running with directions and not do too many outlanders. And another thing I want to mention is presentations. If you want them, make sure you run it through the Chair, no matter who's chairing. I request that we keep them to county business, and I've also asked all presentations, if they're coming, to keep less than five minutes, so that we're not misusing the Board time on items. So I want to throw that out, but Commissioner Tabia, you probably have my support on this, because it's what I'm used to doing for the last few years when we first got on here, and I think it's a better way to do business than at the regular meetings. We can bring out all the other items that don't just contain to zoning. I think when we do bring zoning into these meetings, it's because we're on a time critical for our community, which makes sense, because we're here definitely to serve the public. And Commissioner Smith, is that a new light or an old light?
Old light.
Old light. I don't have any more lights, or am I trying to have a light down there? Okay. So I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Pass this four one with Commissioner Loeb in objection. We are done with regular items? No, I have item J4.
Madam Chair, I'd move to approve item J4, the O'Blough Code Enforcement lien item, as directed on the Agenda Report.
Thank you, sir. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Pass this five zero. We are moving into Board reports, because I have no more new public comments. County Manager.
I have no report.
Thank you. Ms. Bentley, County Attorney.
No report.
Commissioner Loeb.
Right, I have a request here. I don't think we need a motion, although our prior comptroller would, I'm sure, contend that we do. So if someone wants me to make a motion, I will, but I don't feel I have the need to do that. We had some programs identified in the D2 $5 million portion of the CARES Act funds from some months ago that came in a little bit under budget. I've identified another potential recipient where there's a compelling need that does tie, at least to a large extent, to the COVID pandemic. Brevard County Legal Aid, which is a nonprofit, I'm not on their Board, I have never been on their Board, I have done pro bono work for them, but that's the extent of it. I'd like to authorize up to $90,000, although the number is likely to be quite a bit less than that, to go toward funding them to deal with domestic violence costs that have risen over and above what they've previously had based upon the COVID pandemic, or that look like they are in all likelihood increased based upon the COVID pandemic.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Pass this four five with Commissioner Zonka.
Four one?
Thank you, four one. Don't trust me with my math.
I have trouble with these numbers today.
Well, I always do, and it's terrible in my profession. Commissioner Zonka, yes ma'am.
I just, I'm not against, as far as, you know, you supporting that organization. What I'm against is the divvying up of the funding, so that's kind of what I have an issue with, because I would love to be able to designate pieces and portions of COVID relief monies to places and organizations that I find worthy, and I think it sets a bad precedent.
Okay, one other thing, Madam Chair, and I certainly disagree with some of those remarks, but with respect to something we heard earlier today on an item, where I think I was in the singular-digit minority here on a four one.
You're handling them better, too, by the way.
You get older, you care less about certain things. You get less hair, you care less about certain things, although thankfully, I don't think anyone else up here has that concern. I'm probably the only one. Yeah, I'm the only one up here that's got that issue. You know, I got that, I deserve that, though. My brother, who's three and a half years older, I used to tease him when he was losing his hair, and he said, "Your day will come." He was right. Now it's on video that I've said that, so that'll get played, I'm sure. One of the items that we heard earlier today was that we had X number of Republicans in Tallahassee, all of whom voted in a certain way. I got to vent for just a few seconds. This ideological purity nonsense is just getting real old. Folks, our constituents, elect individuals, not political parties. If we had, for instance, every Republican in Tallahassee vote to reuse and share dirty needles, would I somehow be wrong for having a spine using a little bit of logic and good sense and saying, "I'm not going to support sharing needles in Brevard County"? Yes, I think with a commission that's composed of five Republicans, yes, disproportionately, I think folks do expect us to follow party lines, but, you know, none of us should be robots where we feel absolutely incapable of deviating with particular items where there's a compelling reason, or there's some local peculiarity, or extenuating circumstances that apply in our district, or something that may not have even been considered elsewhere. You know, the fact is, you know, we have home rule, we have local rule, some folks love it, some folks hate it, but I'm never going to feel tied because a particular political party has a position on an item where I can articulate why it is that I'm voting a different way. Is it, you know, is it persuasive to me that every Republican may vote a certain way? Yeah, it's persuasive to me oftentimes, but it's not something that binds me to follow that particular precedent. I'll tell you, we've had bills in Tallahassee that I've not agreed with, and I think probably most all of us up here would agree we don't like. There was one that I was informed of a little while ago that I believe passed, I know it certainly did well with our Republican majority House, that essentially would alter how we would have to give notice and what we would have to do with respect to canceling solid waste collection contracts with outside entities. Not only is that an assault on home rule, but the way that it was phrased, we would have to give them something like three years of notice and pay them eighteen months of what they would stand to gain in the contract. That's something, and I believe that may have gone through, and if I'm off on the numbers a little bit, I apologize, but that kind of stuff where if every single Republican in Tallahassee supported, I don't care. The bottom line is it's bad for our constituents, and I'm not going to support something like that locally. So, you know, to the extent that it makes people feel great to try to twist our arms by saying a certain individual is not voting along with how the party voted elsewhere, go for it if that's what you need to do to feel happy, but to me, I find it incredibly offensive. I've never said that to anyone. This business with, I guess the logical fallacy is called no true Scotsman, where you can just say, "Oh, no true whatever the heck, whatever, do X, Y, and Z," it's meaningless. You know, look at my party registration. I'll put my record for what I've done with a political party against almost anyone's, but to say that I'm somehow more or less Republican because I disagree with a particular proposal, or someone stands up here, is ridiculous. So I'll shut up, I've vetted all I want, but I think I made the point.
You're not alone on that most of the time. Commissioner Tabia.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and this, to Commissioner Loeb's consternation, will be dealing with stuff up in Tallahassee. I just wanted to make everyone aware of a bill that made through, as it certainly pertains to stuff that we've dealt with. To be clear, something I don't plan to bring back, but something you may want to weigh in, and that was HB 403, which preempts local governments from ours from restricting home based businesses. This strongly indicates that the winds certainly are changing up there in Tallahassee, and the parallel here is this is virtually identical to short-term rentals. This would prohibit us from taking action on it. Now, I'm certainly on the other side of this than the rest of you guys, but I wanted you guys to certainly be aware of this. I think a level playing field is best. So to give you an idea, a repair shop could open in a garage, dogs could be barking at a grooming facility located in a garage, or you could have a simple online retail run out of your neighbor's house. So again, I'm going to bring this up because I know that this Board, and certainly a lot of, a number of the constituents, were concerned with short-term rentals. I think this has many parallels to it, and is the precursor to short-term rental being controlled by Tallahassee, and I know that we have preemption, that we took legislative action prior to that. However, the state, of course, has the ability to preempt that as well. So be aware, if you're on the other side of this, certainly contact your constituent, you are, sorry, your legislators, but make your constituents aware, but there will be deregulation of home business, which I see as a very positive sign. However, I understand many people could be on the other side of that. So that's just the report, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Loeb, did you want to ask him a short question?
Very, very short.
Okay.
Just a comment. You know, with respect to that, Commissioner Tabia, you know, I'm happy to criticize when criticism is due, but I think, you know, even when I don't agree with someone on everything, I think they need to be recognized when they do things that are worthy of recognition. I'll tell you your stance with respect to the short-term rentals, even though I didn't agree with you in the end. I think it's admirable that despite the political fallout, the backlash, that you did have that stance, I think it does show that you're willing to take a position that, you know, might not necessarily be the most popular. So for whatever it's worth, I, you know, I want you to know that it's noticed, and from my perspective, it's something that's commendable.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Smith.
Thank you, Madam Chair. At the last meeting, I was charged with looking into microfibers to see if they were a concerning issue, and if so, how much, and so I relied on my go-to folks, Virginia Barker and Duane DeFreeze, Director of the IRL, and they both expounded on microfibers. The real issue, which boiled down to this, it is an issue, we don't know how significant it is yet. Duane DeFreeze, after speaking probably fifteen minutes on it, he said, "Bottom line, Commissioner, is that with all the things we do know about what's a problem with Indian River Lagoon and microfibers, I would have to say, if you put these on a scale of one to 10, microfibers are a 10 at this point." Virginia said that it's a complicated issue, and what stunned me about her comment was that microfibers, most of the microfibers that can be determined actually come from our clothing. So when you're doing your wash at home, and that goes into the wastewater, it doesn't get filtered out in the processing, and so when it gets dumped, it's in the environment. So while there is microfibers contributed with the trash on the sides of the road, particularly when it gets cut up with mowers, it really isn't the primary source. So it's scary to me that things like PFOS, which we've all heard about being detrimental to your health, it's actually on your clothes. That's what perma-pressed clothing, that's how they make the perma-press in your clothing. But the good news is that you can absorb PFOS through your skin. You could fill a swimming pool with it and swim in it, and it wouldn't hurt you, as long as you didn't ingest it somehow. But once you ingest it, then you're in trouble.
So edible clothes are out.
So edible clothes. So as, in fact, Virginia said, unless your clothing is 100% cotton or made from bamboo, you're walking around with microfibers on your body. So that's that. And then the other thing I wanted to bring up, Logan, do you have a photo for me? There it is. I had mentioned to you folks about the visitor passes that are available to the public. We've just made that easier. These will be in the Orlando Airport and other places around the county in Orlando. This allows a visitor to just get a pass, transponder, that allows them to get charged the same as we do as permanent residents.
Good.
Laura mentioned today that we have discounts if you have a transponder, so our discounts are applicable to visitors, and the only thing they're responsible for is to return it. When they return it, they get their deposit back. So this will be in the airports and different places around the county, and this will be unveiled next month. So one more step CFX is making to make our visitors feel welcome and make it a more pleasant experience when they visit.
You're doing a good job on that board. Vice Chair Zonka.
Yes, I wasn't sure if I was going to admit to this publicly, but I have agreed to volunteer my dancing skills, let's hope they're skilled, for Dancing for the Space Coast this June 5th, and luckily for me, they pair me with a professional, and my job is to fundraise. Obviously, I have to learn to dance, which I think we've already done at least 12 dance classes already, and I thought I could dance beforehand, before I actually worked with a professional, but it's clear that I can't. So hopefully that, I said, as long as I don't fall, I think that'll be a success for me, and as long as I can raise money for charity. But this event, it's a big event. The Sheriff's Department usually sort of leads the charge on this, and in 2019, they raised over $350,000 for local charities. This year, its charities are U.S. Law Enforcement Eternal Flame, the Habitat for Humanity of Brevard, the Women's Center, Family Promise of Brevard, and the Brevard Public Safety Charity. So I'm asking, obviously, a shameless ask, if you would like to support me. I would say, if you want to come to the event and have a good laugh, and watch all of us dance, it's fun. It's been fun learning, and I was fortunate to be paired with Barry Johnson, and he's the owner and dancer of the professional with the Melbourne Ballroom, so I'm very grateful to Barry, he's been wonderful. But if you're interested, you could just send us, send me an email, send me a message on Facebook. I would be more than happy to help collect your fundraising dollars on my behalf, but like I said, it's a great event, it puts a lot of money into these charities, and that's why I agreed to do it. That's why I let the sheriff and my husband both bully me into doing it this year. My husband did it one year, and he said it was fun, and it is truly, it has been an enormous amount of fun. So I would just ask, if you're interested in supporting a charity, this is a great one. And on a personal note, I just want to congratulate and brag on my daughter a little bit. She graduated Eastern Florida with her associates this past week. She's 17, she started college at 14, and she actually graduated with her college degree before she graduates from high school later this month. So I want to congratulate you, Jackie, and Mom is so proud of you, and she starts UCF Biomed program this summer, and she wants to be a doctor, so she'll go to medical school after that degree. So very proud of her, and I just wanted to give her a shout out, embarrass her maybe just a little bit.
That's really wonderful.
So thanks, that's all I have.
Wonderful. On the Dancing for the Space Coast, that's like a Dancing with the Stars.
Yes, and Ms. Pritchett's done it before, too.
It was pretty terrible, yeah, but it's fun. If you guys want to go to the website, you can buy a table under Commissioner Zonka's name, and they'll even give you some food while you're enjoying it.
Right. I don't have a problem promoting it, because it does benefit charity. There's no benefit to me, other than a lifetime of embarrassment and a YouTube video that will never go away.
She's probably going to shock us with her cha-cha-cha.
I doubt it. I'm going to try. I may take a few drinks beforehand, but not too many.
Yes, that would be good. Just a couple things, Commissioners, I wanted to let you know, our office received an email to our staff, and it looked like it was from me, so you guys might want to be note on your, your office has actually been signed me to my legislative aid, so you might want to pay attention to that and watch for scams coming to your emails. So we're going to send it through the IT. And one other thing I want to brag on is yesterday, there was an accident over in our district, and the car was on fire, and my administrative assistant was driving behind her, stopped and pulled the child out of a car.
Oh, my God.
So I want to give out a shout out to Jessica Price for doing such a heroic job, and so that's all I have, and on that, I'm going to call this meeting adjourned.
The opinions expressed by any member of the public during any period of public comment do not necessarily reflect the views or opinions of the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, Space Coast Government Television, or the program's sponsor, and are solely those of the presenter. The Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, Space Coast Government Television, and the program's sponsor hereby expressly disclaim any and all responsibility or liability for any defamatory or slanderous statements expressed by any member of the public during any such period.